Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular meeting of the Revere City Council on September 16th, 2013. All rise and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America through the republic which stands one nation under God, indivi- individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Counselor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Correggio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Gino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Penta.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Counsel President Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the journals of the meetings of August 26th and September 3rd, 2013.
Are there any additions or corrections to that journal? Hearing is seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Vote as ordered.
Counselor item number one, report of the Ways and Means Subcommittee.
Before I get a Ways and Means report, I'd like to just advise everybody that if you haven't noticed, we have a new speaker system. So, everybody should hear it. People at home should hear it. And we hope that it's better for everyone. And I would hope that the counselors and the speakers coming to the podium do not have to get very close to the mic, as they can see. I am sitting back and it's still being broadcast. So, please be patient on the new system and do not blow out arrears. So, we thank you for that, and I will call on Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. On September 5th of this year, the Ways and Means Subcommittee met with four items on the agenda. The first was number 13-169, which is the establishment of a revolving fund for employee training and public relations. This is an issue that had come up from the mayor, and there was a request to use some rental revenue that is generated by MetroPCS. The Director of Finance said it was approximately $30,000 that would be coming to the city, and the idea that the mayor had for using that money was for professional development for employees of the city. And that included some travel expense if there is a presentation or a seminar somewhere in state, there would be a reimbursement available for gas and mileage. There was a pretty lengthy discussion in committee. We at committee had decided that we would cut the amount to $15,000, and that there would be a reporting language that would be provided by the Director of Finance about how much money is used out of the account, and where the money is used and what it's used on. I know that there has been some discussion about potentially including all of this money, but as it stands right now, the committee is recommending that the amount be $15,000, and that there be quarterly reports on the fund.
Mr. President. Counselor Penta.
If we're going to take one, you try to note by itself, I'd like to speak on this. Thank you.
Do so.
I'd like to amend the motion to cut $15,000 to leave the $30,000 in there. We just had a budget process that no one seemed fit to cut this. The mayor basically took this money and made it transparent, and every agency in the state, cities across the state, send people to seminars and... And let me tell you, I go to quite a few of those where I work, and they do nothing but good. They make you a better worker, they make you a better employee, and I've never went to one that I didn't get something out of it. So, I am one that has asked this council that'll amend this to keep the whole $30,000 in there in the future. I wouldn't even mind seeing any reasonness, but we're already into the... We just had a budget process, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to mention that I watched it on TV, the Ways and Means, because I really didn't think it was going to be that much conversation. I didn't come... I'm not on the committee, but I usually come to the committee. I didn't think there would be that much conversation about this. I just want to mention that, to make the citizens out there aware that did hear the meeting, that this is newfound... This is not newfound money. This money was probably started in the early 2000s through the last administration. It just went to the auditor's... The check just went to the auditor's office, and I believe the mayor just wants to... Just wanted to make it more transparent by putting a revolving account, and, you know, I don't think it's up to us to micromanage the... I wouldn't do it with Mayor Amrazino, and I don't feel that we should do it with Mayor Rizzo. Also, I noted in the Advocate on the front page how they mentioned how the money from the account will also be used to reimburse Mayor D. M. Rizzo for toll and mileage expense for travel. I want the people out there to be, you know, if they're not aware already, that he refused to... He refused to... The mayor refused to buy a vehicle. He uses his own vehicle, which past administrators have not. And I believe it's already happening about the reimbursement, so I don't think that's a big issue. So, I think we should go back, as Counselor Penta said, just let the $30,000 go, and then if there's a question, when we have to do the budget again, we bring it up at budget time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'm a little confused here. Are we trying to say that we are concerned about the mayor managing $30,000 when we have a $154 million budget that he manages? I'm a little bit taken back by the fact that we're worried about this little account. I think we should be worried about bigger things. There are much bigger accounts that I would be concerned about. So, I certainly am not in favor of cutting this small revolving account, and that's my two cents on it.
Mr. Chairman, Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will maybe to enlighten some members. This came to us, as I said, I think a couple of months ago, and this was not something that I wanted to see cut, but the committee, in its wisdom, thought that we would be able to cut it. I will say that the idea of having... And what I pushed for initially was the idea of reporting it. I think it's just important to know that the money's being spent in the right manner. I think, you know, although it is a miniscule amount compared to the entire budget, there was just a news report recently about a UMass employee who was, you know, I think they... He embezzled millions of dollars, and nobody knew about it. I'm just saying that the idea of reporting and the idea of making sure that every penny of $158 million budget is accounted for is something that we should do, and that's part of my job as Chairman of Ways and Means. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor Zambudo.
Point of information.
What is your point of information?
Just in case the Chairman of Ways and Means thought that I was directing something at him, because he seems to be responding to what I said, that was not intended. That was just a broad point of I didn't think this micromanaging of $30,000 was something we needed to do. Thank you.
So noted, Counselor. On the substitute motion to return... To come out with the $30,000, Madam Clerk.
Quarterly reports as well?
Quarterly reports as well. Yes.
Roll call, Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Present.
Present. Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
No.
No, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
No.
No, Counselor Riordan.
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes. The motion passes.
Motion passes. Next order of business.
Mr. President, reconsideration not prevail.
Suspension of rules, all in favor? All opposed? Vote as ordered. On suspension of rules, hoping that the motion does not prevail. On reconsideration, all in favor? All opposed? Vote supported. Turn to regular order of business. Public safety. Committee on Public Safety... I'm sorry, we have more. Counselor. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next three items we have are far less controversial. The next item was 13-177, proposed ordinance amending Schedule A2A of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere. This was kind of a cleanup of our ordinances and a breakout of the parking clerk and the city clerk in the ordinances. We currently do it in the budget, they're accounted for separately, but our ordinances were... Had the position as under the same... Under the same position, so the two separate positions. So, this would just merely break those out, and that would pass favorably out of the committee. And I would ask that we vote favorably as a full council.
Are there any councils that would like to speak on this? Hearing none. We are ordered to a second reading. All in favor? All opposed? Vote as ordered. On a third and final reading. All in favor? All opposed? Roll call.
On engrossment and ordainment, Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas. Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is ordered, engrossed, and ordained.
Counselor Rigo.
Next item was number 13-210, a memorandum of agreement with Unit C. This was brought to us in late August. This is an agreement between the city and Unit C of Labor's Local Number 22. This is a one-year contract that is a 2% increase with the call-takers and dispatchers for the police and fire department. This, again, passed favorably out of the committee, and I would hope that the full council also passes it favorably.
On the recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee, on the Unit C, Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council approve the memorandum of agreement between the City of Revere and Revere Unit C Local 22? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the memorandum of agreement has been approved.
Counselor Rigo.
The last item we have is number 13-212, which is Moody's Investor Service Report. We had brought this up in committee, but then decided that it may be wise for the entire council to hear from our Director of Finance, and I know the mayor's also in the audience, so I don't know if they both want to address this issue, but this is a report that came out that is relatively favorable from Moody's about our bond rating and our financial standing currently. So, we wanted to kind of give the opportunity to the administration to speak on this in front of the full council. So, Mr. President, I think the mayor is ready to address us, so...
Mr. Mayor, you run.
This is a brand-new system to me. This is good? I don't have to push anything?
I'm touched by human hands.
Not to be touched. Okay. I will not touch it. Mr. President, members of the council, thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity. This is actually good news, as you all know, and I think it's a tribute to all of you who have worked with the administration for the last couple of years, to help keep our rating as strong as it is, A1, as you know. By having that strong rating, it allows the city to bond at more favorable rates, and obviously, as a community, we want to be known as somebody who has strong financial stability. And thanks to your hard work, we do. So, I want to congratulate each and every one of you counselors for the work that you've done and how you've helped me along over these last couple of years in keeping our city on solid financial ground. The outlook continues to be positive for our city. We have a lot of exciting things on the horizon in terms of new growth and potential for new growth, and so I'm confident with your continued support and with us working together that we'll continue to see ratings like this and recognition like we just received from Moody's continue to come our way. So, really, I know George Anzoni may shed a little bit more light on this, but I just want to, from the administration's standpoint, thank all of you for your hard work. Obviously, this rating could not be attained by just our office. It is a... An absolute group effort. That's why that we're here, to provide that fiscal oversight that people expect, and it's obviously paid off. So, my gratitude and thanks go to all of you. Thank you very much.
Anything else, Counselor? On the committee's recommendation and acceptance, any questions from Treasurer?
I don't have any questions. I do want to commend the mayor and George on this report and the good news that it brought, and it is a testament to the strong work that you guys have done. Thank you.
If I just may make one statement, it's this. Again, do I have to push a button?
Should be on... It's a green.
It is a green, okay. What I do want to make clear, and I reiterate what the mayor said, it's all of us working together that makes this happen, and what we put before you and how you analyze it and how this body analyzes it, and the questions they ask have always been very pertinent, and we... And that's a great conversation that we need to have. During the time that we went for the... We talked about the bonding for the various projects, the four or five projects that we have, from the New Hill School to the New Park, to the relocation of the New Park, the purchase of land. At that time, I had mentioned that, and also the renovation of the McKinley School, the old McKinley School, at that time, I mentioned to this body that what they would like at all times, when you talk to Moody's, they want to see the plan be closed, and that's what they saw. They saw the plan closed, that we had a answer for all of the things that were asked, and that we had a plan, and they looked on it in high regards, obviously. Now, the other part of it, too, is that further... All the financial looks. We also had a financial summit, and the information from the financial summit with some number changes, because the numbers became much clearer. Those were provided to Moody's during the... Before the conversation we had about a month and a half ago now, I think, and the total amount of bonds that sold, or notes that sold, was 4.6 million, and the reason, I think that we should know, is that what they look at in Moody's for future development is if there's any type of interest. And we had four bidders, and they were very strong bidders. I just want to say on that 4.5 million, 4.518608, the net interest cost was 0.32%. So, when you have a good rating, those are the kind of interest rates you pay. People actually pay premiums in order to get this issue. So, with that, and I always think the council will be... And it was always my pleasure to work with the city council, and thank you very much, and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Really briefly, we know I've been here a while, and I... I'm one that can remember when a bond rating such as this was a wish. So, I want to commend the mayor, the financial director, or the CFO, I should say, and the whole team, and I guess we do deserve a little credit for cooperating with the administration. And so, I'm thrilled that we have this kind of a bond rating. I think there's many cities and towns that would kill to have this kind of a rating. So, again, kudos to the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. On the recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee, all in favor? All opposed? Vote as ordered.
Counselor item number two, report of the Public Safety Subcommittee.
Counselor Powers. Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Subcommittee met earlier this evening. There were two items on the agenda. One was amending an ordinance with regard to civil fingerprinting for certain vendors and other people providing services that required licenses from the City of Revere. That was item number 13-190. Sergeant Gino came before the city council recently and cited a need for this, and I certainly, and the committee certainly, felt that he was 100% right. So, this item will be reported out favorably from the Subcommittee this evening, and it will give... You know, every day we read about children being exploited in this, all around the state and the country, and this will certainly help put a little teeth into the licensing that takes place by this city. So, the committee, again, is reporting this out favorably. The second item on the agenda was item number 13-204, which involved the granting of a parking garage license at 473 Revere Beach Parkway, where there are eight, and I'll be very clear, one-bedroom units being constructed at that location. And this, again, also, they've met all the requirements of the Revere Fire Department with regard to suppression systems, et cetera, and this will be also reported out favorably this evening for a vote of the full council. Thank you, Mr. President. Any councils on the committee report, recommendations? None? On the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee on this issue, all in favor?
Are we taking these separately?
Separately.
Yeah, okay.
This is first item. 190 first, all in favor? It's an order and change. Ordered to a second reading. All in favor? All opposed? Ordered to a third and final reading. All in favor? All opposed? Ordainment and engrossment. Roll call.
On ordainment and engrossment of the amendments to the Civil Fingerprinting Ordinance for Individuals Applying for or in Possession of Certain Licenses. Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Second item, Mr. President, is 13-304, I believe. 204.
204. And this is also being reported out favorably.
Shall the City Council approve a Chapter 148 license for Nine John Street LLC? He's requesting an eight-vehicle parking garage license at 473 Revere Beach Parkway. Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the license has been granted. Counselor item number three, report of the Appointment Subcommittee.
Counselor Guanasso, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Appointment Subcommittee met. We had two very important appointments before us, and 13-206, appointment of Nicholas Reistrum as a city engineer in accordance with Section 2-48-010 of the Revised Ordances of the City of Revere. He was voted out favorably by the Committee, the Appointment Subcommittee. Also, we can take these both up at once, Mr. President, because either one of them... Both of them were voted out favorably. 13-209, residency waiver for Kevin Sheehan, library director, in accordance with Section 2-06-060B of the Revised Ordances of the City of Revere. The Appointment Subcommittee voted both of these individuals out favorably, and we ask that the committee, the whole, do the same. Thank you, Mr. President.
We have to vote on these separately, because one's a residency and one's a permanent appointment.
Okay.
Shall the City Council approve the appointment of Nicholas Reistrum to the position of city engineer in accordance with Section 2.48.010 of the Revised Ordances of the City of Revere? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed. Shall the City Council approve a residency waiver for Kevin Sheehan, the library director, in accordance with Section 2.06.060B of the Revised Ordances of the City of Revere? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the residency waiver has been granted.
Madam Clerk, before we move on to communications, I'd like to get a suspension of rules, please. All in favor? All opposed? Vote as ordered. At this point, I'd like to have the clerk read item number 10 from the mayor regarding the cancer.
Counselor item number 10, communication from the mayor relative to Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you very much. Obviously, the proclamation, I think, pretty much would speak for itself, and I think all of us, in one way or another, have been affected by this, either personally, within their families, or certainly have friends that have had to deal with this terrible illness, and so I'm just hoping that we can all support this proclamation and recognize that September of 2013, I know we're halfway through it, but that we recognize it as Childhood Awareness Month, and to help raise awareness for pediatric cancer and its victims. So, this was actually brought to our attention by one of our own residents who was impacted... So this was actually brought to our attention by one of our own residents who was impacted by this disease, and I'm hopeful that with a positive support, a positive vote, I should say, of the city council, and support of this city council, and acknowledgement, you know, from the city council, that it will continue to raise awareness and hopefully in the future help prevent any incidents, you know, any incidents, all incidents of, certainly of childhood cancer in the future. So thank you very much for your indulgence and hopefully favorable vote. Thank you.
Shall the city council approve a proclamation, well, shall proclaim the month of September 2013 as childhood cancer awareness month? Counselor Arigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, the proclamation has been approved.
Good luck, ladies. Okay. At this time...
Mr. President.
Someone like to speak on anything? Would you like to say something? Sorry about that, ladies.
Honored members of the council, as many of you as you know. Two years ago, my family experienced a tragedy when my grandson passed away from cancer at the age of five. I knew I was going to crack. As we know, cancer can strike any family at any time. While the loss is painful, the support of the community here in Revere, both while he was fighting cancer and since he passed away, has been wonderful. Many of our friends and neighbors helped us raise money for Reggie's treatment and have been supportive and helpful in the two years since he passed. To honor and remember Reggie, my family is dedicated in raising awareness for childhood cancer. The fact that cancer can strike any child at any time is just something that people live with every day. There is hope through research and awareness, we can one day find a cure for childhood cancer. Forty-six children a day is diagnosed with cancer. Seven of them die every day. More children die in a year from childhood cancer than any other illness combined. In 20 years, there hasn't been no new treatments that have been approved by the FDA. So through our awareness, to help in the effort to find a cure, September has been designated as childhood cancer awareness month. The official color is gold, so supporters are asked to wear gold or show their gold to show their support in this effort. Today, I'm asking the council, which you've already done for us, is to join us in supporting all families affected by childhood cancer, just as they supported my family during our struggle. I'm asking for Revere to join a long list of other communities who officially recognize childhood cancer. Recently, Woben put up gold lights around their town hall and common to honor the month. Wilmington also had a ceremony where gold ribbons were placed around the town. And right next door in Boston, the Lenny-Sakim Bridge, the Prudential Center, and the Gillette Headquarters all lit up gold for one night. While it may not seem like much, but raising awareness and showing support helps make sure that people know how serious this issue is. Through awareness, charities, and hospitals, they're able to raise money to help fight this terrible disease. Even a small step by the city, like hanging gold ribbons at City Hall or the fire station, putting up gold lights, or having a wear gold day for the employees of City Hall, would go a long way in raising awareness and honoring the memory of my grandson to those like him who have fought this terrible cancer. Massachusetts is one of 30 states that have now declared September as childhood cancer awareness month, which is 30 more than did last year. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I'm going to bring up an emergency situation to you. We do not have a correspondence on it due to a sickness, and, but we want to bring it out verbally to you to establish a public hearing for the sewer line break on Winthrop Avenue. So I'm going to invite the mayor to speak on it and explain what's going on so we can get the ball rolling on getting a hearing for bonding on it. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. As probably all of you know, or may know, we had a serious sewer breakdown on Winthrop Avenue. About 12 feet of sewer line collapsed, and so for the last week and a half, has it been a week and a half yet, almost two weeks, we have been bypassing that sewer line down on Winthrop Ave., which has cost our city overtime money for both details and DPW assistance, and obviously, we need to pursue a long-term fix. Now, the good news is that you have all approved funding in the past to, for us to meet the terms of our consent decree with respect to, you know, the ongoing sewer and water work that we've been doing, and that will ultimately be money that will be spent towards this project. The problem is getting the immediate funding to fix this particular project. It falls under the guise of some emergency short-term borrowing that I'm going to let Bob Button talk about here in a second, but it is critical that we go forward with this action in order to get this done as soon as possible, and hopefully with as least possible disruption to those neighborhoods. I am going to work with Counselor Penta, along with my administration and Bob Button from CDM Smith, to try to get those neighbors down there notified, maybe by way of a neighborhood meeting, to let them know what's going on and how much work that will actually be done. The sewer pipe is 20 feet down in the ground. So if you can imagine having to go down 20 feet to repair this line, it's going to be quite a job, and it's going to unfortunately take some time. It's work that would have had to be done anyway, but just not on an emergency basis. So Bob's going to come up here and explain in a little more detail, but it is going to be unfortunately an inconvenience for people down in that area. But they, at the end of this whole project that we're undertaking here, they will be better served, but it's going to come unfortunately with a little bit of pain and hopefully, from their end, a little bit of patience. So with that, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, I'd like to have Bob Button come up and discuss it a little further.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Bob Button with CDM Smith in Cambridge, Mass. As the mayor said about two weeks ago, we had a sewer collapse on Winthrop Avenue. It's approximately an 18-inch diameter sewer. In addition to being 20 feet below ground, it's also underneath two MWRA water mains, one 24 inches in diameter and the other 16 inches in diameter. There's a 10-inch gas main and a 10-inch water main in addition to Verizon and other communication ducts that are in the way in the street. So it's a very, very complicated situation. We're currently bypass pumping the sewage now, but the city and the MWRA is very concerned about further collapse and jeopardizing the water system and/or further problems in the area. This particular line, the repair is a little over 700 feet, but it actually drains more than 400 acres in the city, which is more than 10 percent of the city actually runs through this area. So it's a localized problem with widespread implications for the city. We are hopeful that we will be back next Monday evening for a public hearing on this short-term emergency borrowing, and we'll have more details and more information for you at that point in time.
Thanks, Bob. Counselor Penta, Joe Ward.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, things like this here is a nightmare to ward councils, but I've sat with the mayor, Donnie Go and Bob Buttons on this, and coming up with a master plan. I want people to realize that people are going to be affected in that area. It's going to take two to three months to finish, and it's, you know, it's going to, traffic is going to be diverted, the bus route may be diverted at times, but it has to be done. I mean, no one wants to see raw sewage going through the houses. Right now, they have, you know, they have these pumps in place bypassing this, but as they went further down, this pipe is just crumbling. So it's actually going all the way to Broadway from Winthrop Ave. It's very detailed work that they have to do. There's water pipes they have to go around. They're actually going to fix those in that area, so there'll be upgraded water lines now. But the positives are going to come out of this. I mean, the mayor, and I give him credit for this, is not band-aiding this. They could have band-aided it right where the Little League Park is, but two months down the road, you'd have to come back in and fix the rest of the pipe. I asked, the mayor asked, and everybody in that room basically said, let's fix this, let's do it right. It is a main sewer line, and I think it was 24 feet down, 20 to 24 feet down. So you realize how massive this job is going to be. It's a main sewer line. The people will be notified there through 9/11 calls. The mayor said it, I believe, we're going to have a meeting at the church, possibly hold it. They will be informed, because they're going to be a little inconvenienced, and unfortunately, that's the traffic. It may have to be diverted, how to get home. They're talking all doing this 16 hours a day, but the road shut down, it'll be quicker. So I think no one wants to take a chance of more of this pipe breaking down and bringing two or three pumps in to bypass it. But it's, I'm glad that the administration's on top of this, that they've been working on this for the past couple of weeks, updating things with the DPW. I talked to Donnie constantly about it. Like I said, they have a master plan, and I think they're going to roll that out with the police department, how this traffic is best going to be diverted at times. The people live in Winthrop Ave. Our assistant clerk actually is one of the houses. He may not be able to park his car there for hours at a time to get down there when certain work is being done. I mean, these are things, it has to be done. Trust me, I thought long and hard, can we bypass this, bypass that? Unfortunately, it's not the type of thing that you band-aid. This is raw sewage, and no one wants to see that affecting that. The whole neighborhood down there would be affected if we don't fix this pipe. All the way up to Broadway, I think across Ward 4, as Mr. Button said, 10 percent of the area of the city. You know, it's five mile square miles in the city, so think of it. 10 percent of that, you know, it's half a mile square, so it has to be done. I'm just asking people to be patient. Any suggestions when this does start and they start diverting traffic either down Harris Street or towards the Parkway, to be patient and realize it's something that has to be done, and we have all the minds put together, all the traffic, the police, the chief of police was there at the meeting, the fire department, they're all aware of this. So there is a master plan being put in effect. Once that is finalized, they asked the mayor, the mayor agreed, neighborhood meetings, 9/11, we'll get the message out to everybody, we have to get out in that area. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think the key word here, both the mayor and Counselor Penta, is patience, because from a construction point of view, you probably couldn't have a worse set of circumstances for this type of a repair. It's an absolute nightmare, and it is going to inconvenience the neighborhood terribly. But I guess the only way you look at that is that the raw sewage would inconvenience you even more. So people are going to be disrupted, they're not going to be able to even probably get to the house with their vehicles at times, but this work has to go on, and so all we can do is ask everybody to be patient, because the repair has to be done, and it's going to take a long time, and I think the mayor said it's going to take a lot of pain, but we need a lot of patience from the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Correggio?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we should move as quickly as possible with this. It's an emergency nature. We don't want to inconvenience the neva, neighborhood any more than we can. I've been in the area down there, they're very much concerned, so I really think we should move as quickly as possible to try to resolve the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Just so everybody knows, you know, I know it was explained that this is an emergency situation, but just going the 22, 24 feet down is not just going down and fixing that sewer line. You have to bypass gas lines and main water lines from MWRA, so it's really not easy, and all those have to be moved out of the way in order to get to this particular line. So it's not an easy, easy fix. So like everybody said, be prepared, you know, it's going to be a long journey, but we want to make it as easy as possible for everybody. But the scenario is, the scenario is that what we want to do is establish a public hearing tonight for next Monday, for the 23rd. Then what will happen is we, our next meeting, and we have to wait 10 days before we can vote on it. So our next meeting on October 7th, okay, will be the night that we will be able to vote on this, and that is comfortable with Bob and our bonding company, the people that are allowing us to spend some money beforehand in anticipation of this vote. So let everybody know what's going on. Counselor Haas? I just wanted to firmly request a public hearing for next week, that's all. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. My understanding is that there's a possibility that the, some of the road traffic, including bus traffic, will be diverted down through Harris Street, and I just want to make sure that all of the residents down on Harris Street, Sewell Street, Library Street, that area down in there, will be adequately informed, I think perhaps even through the, in addition to the 9/11 call, but also some sort, type of a schematic be put on TV with regard to just where the traffic will be going through in those affected neighborhoods, Ward 1, Ward 4, and Ward 5. So I hope that'll be done, and it'll be done as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Now, I want everybody to understand, right now, the MBTA, I believe, is hearing for this for the first time. So they still have to go to the drawing board and see what has to happen, and right after we vote on this, we're going to be bringing up the MBTA folks to discuss bus stops, so be patient with me, please. Okay? Bob, do you have something final?
I was just going to say that the administrator for Mass DOT was contacted last week, as well as the commissioner of DCR, so that we can begin the dialogue on some of those traffic diversions that we'll need to do, including the MBTA.
Okay, there you go. So on the motion to establish a public hearing for a loan order for the repairs of Winthrop Avenue sewer line, all in favor? All opposed? So moved. And since we're under suspension of rules, at this time, we've been requesting the MBTA to attend one of our meetings regarding bus stops and the relocations, et cetera, and the team is here.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Could you read calendar item number 19, please?
Well, that's what we're bringing up, Counselor. So noted. Well, it's been requested also before, but we'll bring it up again because it's here. Read the motion, please.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that the mayor request Eric Shire of the MBTA to appear before the city council to explain the moving of several bus stop locations throughout the city.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name's Eric Shire, I'm a project director with the MBTA. I live in Cambridge, Massachusetts.
Well, where do we start? I just want everybody to know that prior to everything happening, I think it was last year or a year and a half ago, we had public hearings here at, in the city Revere. They had hearings in Chelsea relating to all the bus stops on 116, 117 route, if I'm correct. Those are the only two routes, right? And those are the routes that go from Wonderland to Maverick. So what they were doing, and I just want to preface this so everybody knows what's going on, they're trying to speed up their bus routes, because there were so many bus routes, and people were complaining that the buses were late. So the MBTA put a team together and tried to work with the cities of Revere, Boston, and Chelsea to eliminate bus stops, relocate bus stops, to try and make them further apart so the buses wouldn't have to stop as often. Now, just recently... Now, just recently, they actually started to do these actions. And I don't, because they're removals and ads and movings and everything like that. Now, I'm sure that all of us have scenarios that we're looking at that we got complaints about. And I know, I don't know if you know them all, but what I'd like to do is, I don't know, I'd like to start with Councilor Guanasso because he had the motion in for tonight. And then I'll go down the line and have everybody explain what scenario they have to explain to Eric and his team and get some explanation of what's going on. Does that sound fair?
Sounds fair.
Okay. Councilor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Eric, I've been inundated with phone calls in reference to the location of these bus stops. And I understand fully that there were meetings conducted with the MBTA and council chambers here in reference to the consolidation of bus stops throughout the community. But obviously, people don't become aware, or be getting, get involved until it immediately impacts their particular situation. And that's human nature, and I can't fault them for that. But I have a few people here that are completely upset. Now, I would have thought maybe when MBTA did have, in the conclusion of all, and the mindset of the MBTA is, we knew that they were going to lessen the impact on the community by making the bus stops more distanced than the past. But I would have thought that maybe we would have been given exact locations to say, what do you think about this? And I think that would have made it, its approach to the community, at least you could have thrown the fault onto us. But we didn't have that experience. We didn't have that opportunity. And I have people that are complaining that they're now sitting on their fences, people are waiting for these buses, they're waiting in their doorway of a restaurant, patrons can't get in, or workers can't get in. And that's human nature. Again, people will try to escape the elements of the day, and that, again, we can understand. But I think, Eric, we should have been part and parcel to this. We should have been involved with this and say, what do you think about this spot? We didn't get that. You have a master plan that you could have given us, here's what I think about Revere Street. I'm going to pick these locations. What's your opinion? It would have made this thing. My phone's been ringing off the hook, and they're very, very legitimate concerns. There's one particular individual called, said, this bus stop hasn't been here for years. And they had one in front of Oxford Park that didn't impact any resident at all, no homeowner in that immediate area, yet they put it in front of this poor gentleman's home, you know, right out his window. And if you, if you know the particular location I'm talking about, it's feet away. It's not yards away, it's feet away. And every conversation that's being conducted at that bus stop is being heard throughout that home. That's not right. And so these people have concerns, and we don't want to beat you, but we want, how do we rectify what's, what's taking place? And work with each council who's been, has an address that people have concern with, and we can relay it to you, to say, can you move it to a particular location, come up on an alternative, to see how best we can serve our community inconvenience, but yet not be an inconvenience to others who live and reside on these bus routes? Can we work with that?
Yes, we can certainly work with that. And I think we have, over the past couple of weeks, we've heard from quite a few of you, we've heard from other citizens in Revere, and there's probably roughly 10 locations where there's some concerns. And I think in many of these locations, there are opportunities to make adjustments. I think our concern is, is that when we start making adjustments, we're moving the potential impact from one person to somebody else. So for example, at, there's a particular location on Revere Street near Broadway, just approaching Broadway, and there is a resident who is concerned about the bus stop being moved in front of her house. Okay, we could push that bus stop closer to Broadway, okay, but then we might be impacting the businesses that are located right in that block. So there's a trade-offs here, and we're certainly willing to consider making adjustments such as that. But I think we have to all be aware that someone's going to be inconvenienced potentially. Now, I think, one of the things which I think is important for us to understand is that there's a number of factors that have led to this. And I think, I just want to quickly summarize what these are. I think, you know, we all know that we want to improve service, and I think everybody hears that the most, that people want faster service, more reliable service. But I think public safety is also a factor that we consider here. As some of these proposed relocations, they, the bus stop is oftentimes very close to a crosswalk, and sometimes it's a block in the crosswalk. So we've, we've tried to relocate stops so we minimize any new or existing pedestrian safety issues. We've also looked at parking impacts. The challenge of parking is that we've had to make these bus stops handicap accessible, not just for persons with disabilities, but seniors as well. And unfortunately, that means we have to lengthen the bus stops. And in Revere, as in all the places that we work, unfortunately, the downside of that is, is on-street parking gets impacted. So when we talk about lengthening a bus stop, the first thing we did was say, well, maybe we can move the bus stop to minimize the parking, maybe we can eliminate the bus stop. So we've really done due diligence there. We tried to, wherever we can, minimize the parking impacts, or by shifting the stop, we can put parking back in the old stop, and maybe we have less of an impact on a new location. We've also tried, in some cases, to reduce traffic congestion. There's a couple of locations where a bus, where the bus stop is located now, or where it was located, it obstructed traffic, or it prevented cars from making turns. So we've, we've taken that into consideration, too. And I think those are the sort of factors that we, we took into consideration. Now, granted, one of, one of the biggest concerns is that we move bus stops to a location, and where customers are waiting for the bus is now in front of a residential property. And that's unfortunate, and I think in some situations, we can make some adjustments, maybe shift the bus stop a little bit and avoid that. But I think, you know, we need to look at these case by case and factor in all these considerations, which I just outlined. I think we also, in many cases, will have to come back to the Traffic Commission if we do go forward with some of these changes, because we have worked with the Traffic Commission on this, and we did get their approval on all these improvements, which I'm sure you all know. So I'm happy to go through these one at a time.
Most of those guys live out of the city.
Yeah, exactly.
You might so.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm happy to go through these one at a time if you'd like, or if you have individual stops that you want to discuss.
Can I just belabor something? If it's not broke, might fix it. In my particular case on Revere Street, and the one you were speaking of, that location could be put right at the corner of Revere Street and Broadway, right at the old Broadway, there's a check cashing, that could be moved there. It's been there for years. People accepted it. They, they, there's a commercial property there, so if people are congregating there, it's not a problem. So you can move that one up 20 yards, and you're there. You're safe. The one on Revere Street, at Ravici Restaurant, that could be moved to the corner of Temple Street very quickly. You're not making any drastic change, but you're putting it back in a location that was acceptable. Nobody complained. So there's two, two solutions right away. And there are others that we can, with common sense, work a doable, and that's why I would like to, the opportunity to go over, the ones that called me, and that's the ones I'd like to service.
No, and those two that you mentioned, we can make adjustments with those.
That's great. Thank you. We can start with that. Thank you, sir.
Councilor Janino. Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I've also received a ton of calls about this issue, and there were a few properties in particular that Councilor Guanasso didn't touch upon, but I'm sure he's heard about. So just to add to the list, you know, there was one in particular that I was really surprised by, 510 Beach Street, a woman's handicap sign was impacted. So that was one big concern of mine, because that's, I couldn't imagine that. Another one was 176 Broadway. Now, if you have that property and you look at where 250 Broadway was, the 250 Broadway woman was in front of an apartment building that, it wasn't affecting windows. When you moved it to the 176 site, it's directly in front, again, within feet of a window, like the other counselor said, you know, you can hear full conversations in this house. So that's something that really affects the quality of life for a person living in that apartment building, whereas a few feet down at the other apartment building, it wouldn't be impacted. Another issue was the restaurant at Revere Street, but Councilor Guanasso touched on that. But I believe that when you have these stops, if they're in front of commercial properties instead of residential ones, if it's only a few doors down, it might be easier for the residents in that area. Thank you.
So with 510 Beach Street, okay, we took a hard look at that, and we realized that we, we did make an error there. It wasn't oversight. We, in many cases, moving handicap parking space 50 feet isn't a large impact, but in this case, we should have checked beforehand. We're making an adjustment. We're pushing that bus stop closer to VFW so that we don't have that problem. It will slightly interfere with handicap accessibility. The back door of the bus may not always be able to get over the sidewalk. So we're hopeful that that doesn't create a problem, but I think, I mean, ultimately, we're able, we're able to put that, that space back to where it was. The 176 Broadway, is that at Herman, what is that, Cross Street?
Herman Street.
It's at Herman Street. Right, right. We looked at a couple of other opportunities of where else we could put that stop. We looked at the, further south where the dry cleaner is now. We thought about putting it there, but we would have had to remove three parking spaces if we had done that. That wouldn't have been very popular with the dry cleaner. In the other direction, as you know, there's some, some old, it looks like garages or...
Quads.
Okay, quads. And I believe that that parcel is going to, will be redeveloped. And when that happens, I think that's really the ideal time to think about moving that stop. Right now, because there's driveways there, we wouldn't really, wouldn't be able to have a bus stop along that section. I think the only, I'm sorry, the one possibility is if those driveways are abandoned now, it's possible, we could, we could consider reconstructing part of a driveway so that we could have a landing area there. But I think that's, that's challenging, because it is, it would be a lot of reconstruction. Okay, but it is a possibility.
But in terms of that, my, if you could just move it back to maybe the original 250 Broadway site, just a little bit down the road, that wasn't impacting any driveways or anything, and it was right in front of a building where there was already space for it. So that was my only suggestion. And then also alleviate some of the pressure in front of Lombardo's Bakery and other businesses in that area.
And I think that section of Broadway, a lot of the stops are very close together, and that's where we're really trying to consolidate stops, and so we had to make some adjustments accordingly. But I hear what you're saying. I think we can, we'll take a look at that apartment building situation and see if there's opportunities to shift that.
If I could just put my two cents in on that one. I know that's Councilor Redden's area, but, and I had discussions with yourself and Greg, and the more I thought about it, and we talked about the driveways, is there any way to bring it in between the two driveways coming, coming southbound? Move it north and put the beginning of the stop at the edge of the first driveway on the north side?
That's possible. I think we'd still have to reconstruct some of the sidewalk there, but we can look at that.
Okay. Councilor Redden, you want to put in on that, please?
Actually, I have more questions than I have, Councilor. Janino just touched on the one that I was mostly concerned about, but it's not just that. It is so much being moved in that particular location. It's that we've got an apartment building at 250 Broadway, which, the residents of which greatly used the bus stop that was right in front of their house. And it just seemed odd to me that such a subscribed area for use of the bus would be eliminated and in favor of taking it down to an area while, while it is an apartment building, it isn't anywhere near its size. But I have some questions for you, because my understanding is, a lot of this moving of bus stops was motivated by the federal government stepping in and making some new regulations as to the length of bus stops, et cetera, et cetera. Could you elaborate on that a little bit, as to what the requirements are now as a result of the federal changes, to the length of the bus stop, to the placement of the bus stop as, as, as regards curb cuts and driveways? And also as to the, if there are any regulations in place as to the distance between bus stops that we, that you are required to or prefer to adhere to at this point? And if so, whether there is any opportunity to appeal the, appeal it on common sense grounds, such as a huge apartment unit now having to see the bus stop moved down the street?
Of course. The, the length of the bus stop is, is really about complying with accessibility regulations. Now, the MBTA, several years ago, was sued by the Boston Center for Independent Living, which is a, which is an advocacy organization for disabled persons. Part of that agreement that we're legally complied, required to comply with, is to make sure that the buses, when a bus pulls into a stop, that both the front door and the back door of the bus are up against the curb. Okay, right now, throughout the system, not just in Revere, but throughout our whole system, most of our bus stops aren't long enough to allow that. So the MBTA, because of this legal settlement agreement, we're, we're required to make all of our bus stops long enough. And it's the key bus routes, which in Revere has two of them, I'm sorry. These, these are the first routes to get this treatment.
What's long enough?
It depends on where the bus stop is located on a street. If the bus stop is in the middle of a block, there, the bus stop will need to be about 100 feet long. Okay? If it, if the bus stop is at an intersection, either at the near side or the far side of an intersection, the requirement is less. At the far side of an intersection, you need about 60 feet. At the near side, you need about 90 feet. And that is really to allow, and this, fortunately, we're only dealing with 40-foot buses in Revere. In, in Boston, we have 60-foot buses in many neighborhoods, so you can add on 20 and 30 feet to those numbers.
So you're telling me that a 40-foot bus needs 100 feet to get into the curb?
If it's located in the middle of the block, yes.
It, it needs that?
Yes.
And the 60-foot bu, bus needs 100 feet, too?
No, a 60-foot bus needs more.
So in Boston, it's more than 100 feet?
Yeah.
All right. What about the distance between, placement between the stops? Is there a minimal, maximum, what's the deal with that?
Yes, we, we, that was a big consideration of ours. It's really a balance between what's going to be convenient and comfortable for our customers versus what's going to keep the bus from stopping every block. And basically, we're trying to improve service, we're trying to speed up service. So we looked across the country at other transit properties, other bus systems that were similar, that served similar areas, or similar densities, similar demographics as the Boston area. And we came up with a guideline, which is, says that we, there should be a bus stop between every 750 feet and every 1,300 feet. So that's the same as saying, every mile, you're going to have four to seven bus stops. So the, this number is flexible. We're not holding it hard and fast, but it's a, it's a guideline that we've used. And that's really the guideline that we've used when we, when we've talked about eliminating stops and moving stops. It's really to try to get all the stops to fall within that general guideline.
Okay, and lastly, in, in regard to curb cuts, driveways, et cetera, et cetera, is there a complete prohibition against having a bus stop adjacent to a driveway, a curb cut of some other way, maybe even an intersection for that now?
Well, we have tried to avoid having bus stops in front of driveways. I think it's, it can work both ways, because sometimes you can use a driveway as part of that, if we're talking about 100-foot bus stop. If there's a driveway there, sometimes that helps. So you don't, it doesn't impact parking. The downside of driveways is that if you're stepping out of a bus, you don't want to be stepping onto a sloped driveway. And so that's one of the considerations when we talk about where the best place to locate a bus stop is. We have to think about where the front door and the back door of the bus align with the curb.
So as I understand it, then, as long as...
Councilor, because you were shot in this, we have other councils that might have something to say.
I certainly will. I just, well, I think we all should know what the criteria are. It makes it a lot easier to find a better spot.
That's okay, they've, they've said that.
If, as I understand it, then, as long as there's a place for someone to step directly down onto the curb, the bus can use the driveway for a swingway or a curb cut for the swingway, correct? In other words, the swing in.
Well, no, it doesn't, our buses typically, you wouldn't be able to use the driveway to really align yourself parallel to the curb.
Put the mic on, Councilor.
I don't mean going in the driveway, I mean passing by the driveway since there's no car there.
Right, the driveway helps us to get into...
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Redden, I appreciate that. Councilor Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming before us. I'll be brief. I echo the sentiments, sentiments of Councilor Guanasso and Janino. I think really we need to revisit and reanalyze some of these stops, because, you know, we have a lot of elderly in the city, and we don't want to inconvenience them and make them walk any further than they can, especially in the Revere Street area and the 176 Broadway. And another thing that hasn't been mentioned, we're going to have some reconstruction of Broadway, as Mayor Rizzo has a proposal to redo. We already have new, nice lanterns on Broadway, reconstruction and curb changes on Broadway. So you're, you're talking about your buses are long, and you need more room, you may So, you're talking about your buses are long and you need more room, you may have to reevaluate the entire stops, because when Broadway gets reconstructed, the curb changes and the sidewalks. So, you may want to revisit that particular area from 176 Broadway down to Revere Street. Another thing is, I think you should advertise maybe a little more in the, in the local newspaper to let people know about these changes, where they can offer, I know, their opinion, or maybe a suggestion coupon or something in the paper that they can mail back. So you might want to look at some of those things. Thank you for coming before us.
Thank you, Council. Council Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Two things I want to bring up, but my concern is the 119 bus. I've asked on several occasions to have an extra stop at the Target and Stop &amp; Shop. They used to stop across the street, the highway, to let people off where the Shaws was, and now it's closed. But there's a lot of people, so, I mean, you can, there's like cattle going down that highway, on the sidewalk going to those places. I cannot believe that the MBTA would not consider that an extra stop. I appreciate if you look into that, I've been trying for a while, but maybe you could help me with that. The second thing is Central Ave. There's no problem with the bus stop. The issue would happen is you, there's three signs put up in front of 31 Central Ave. The person who lives there has a gate, I mean, a sign, three signs right in front of the gate. The city of Revere has the no parking sign, you have two, two signs. I don't see why the need, that, that, there's a parking lot you actually cross by, the park, I don't know why you need those signs there. It doesn't make sense. There's no parking lot on that hallway anyway. So, it, it doesn't make sense why those signs and the poor person just asking them in front of my driveway, right in front of our gate. And it's, it's really not right. I'd appreciate if you look into having those removed. There's never been a problem with that stuff.
We, we looked at this afternoon, and I totally agree with you. We'll talk to the traffic commission and get those taken care of.
I appreciate it. And the rest of the stuff, I'll, I have your number, I'll, I'll call you on that. Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Penta. Council Patch.
They're going to move them.
Sorry.
Name and address, please.
Sorry. Heather Hume, I'm service planner at the MBTA, and I live in East Boston. I actually, regarding the stop at the Target and Stop &amp; Shop for the 119, we actually previously met with the previous mayor, with the folks at Stop &amp; Shop and the folks at Suffolk Downs. At that time, we were not able to come up with a solution that the bus could turn around safely in that area. There's not any room in the, the actual parking lot area, and there's no spot on the Suffolk Downs property at that time to be able to safely turn the bus around. We are talking with Suffolk Downs as part of the mitigation, if the, if Suffolk Downs does move forward to the casino, we want to ensure that there is an actual safe place for the 119 to actually drive in and turn around, so it'd actually be able to service the Target and Stop &amp; Shop. So that is something that we are discussing, we are aware of, we know that that is a concern, and that's something that we want to try to hopefully address.
Let's put Suffolk Downs aside. Why couldn't you go right into it? Stop &amp; Shop isn't a curb there.
There's no place for the bus to turn around.
There isn't?
No, no.
Bring tractor trailers, I'll show you how to turn them around, they're right there every day.
We can't, we can't turn...
But you're talking about parking on Suffolk Downs property, I'm talking about parking on private property, the Stop &amp; Shop and the Target.
There's not enough room for our buses to actually turn around in the parking lot.
I beg the difference with you there.
The tractor trailers have to go all the way around the parking lot on the outside, and they go around the back.
I go there quite a bit, this, I beg the difference with you. I'll give me you down there and explain to me how you could not drive, drive a bus there.
Right. We, we have met, we are talking about it, we are trying to, we are trying to address it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I also want to just sort of point out, beforehand, we did hold three public meetings here regarding the key bus route service. We have been here, we have met with the community. I want to point out, we have a website, www.mbt.com backslash key bus routes, with all the information regarding the exact placements of the stops, maps, biweekly updates on what is happening with every single section of route, not even just the 116 and 117, but the 111. And all the key bus routes, all 15 routes, are up there and updated on a regular basis. So I think that that's something that, for you folks, as well as the community, should be aware of. We, we keep that updated as much as possible and have a lot of information on that website. So, thank you.
Mr. President, just one other point, because it's very, very important. Eric, earlier on, Mr. Buttons was here, he said he notified the MBTA. You shook your head the first time you heard of it, so I hope people get to, to think together on this. Thank you.
Council Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Eric, have you had contact with John Henry, the parking clerk, at all?
I don't think so.
About parking signs? I, I have the same problem that Council Penta just brought up on Washington Avenue. All of a sudden, the guy, resident there, has got four signs put up in front of his house. And the, the bus stop is put directly in the middle of his front, his front porch. So now he's going to have people sitting in his front, on his porch, and, and why, what is the need of four signs at one area? I mean, it's, you know, it's, I think it's one, I, I gave it to John Henry, because he was getting a list together of, of complaints that he said he was going to send in to, to you. But I believe it's 105. It's right, it's on Park Ave, it's on Washington Ave, if you're heading from Chelsea to north towards Park Ave, it's right before Park Avenue. And they, it's a beautiful house, it just, you know, all of a sudden, he's got four signs put up. I mean, and I also have complaints from elderly that live near New Hall or Malden Street, that they moved the bus stop there. I mean, just common courtesy, when you're going to do something like that, in front, move a bus stop in front of a house, why can't you just say something, you know, give them some little information about it before it happens? I, I mean, you know, the guy comes home from work and he's got four signs in front of his house. And, you know, but we got to get that, at least that bus stop sign moved from the middle, please, from the middle of his, his front walkway. And again, you know, in the future, when you do, when you do move a bus stop, I really feel that you should send letters out to the residents where it's going to go, because it, you know, it really is a shock to, to the people who live there. And I, and thank you. And if I could get you a card before you leave. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Council. Council Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of my questions have already been resolved as far as Revere Street, Malden Street, and especially down in Broadway. I, I like what you said, you're going to try to address it. But you know, it's funny, when I was the chairman of the MBTA Advisory Board, it seemed like there's an awful lot of communications between the MBTA and the local citizens. I'm surprised that you indicated that our traffic commission approved all of these locations. And they didn't get back to the board councillors, because that's who they really should be reporting to. Before you leave, I'd like to have you leave your, your name, we have your name, but your telephone number for, if any of my colleagues have an issue, they can call you directly that it was not addressed this evening. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Eric, as you know, we met down there earlier tonight. My main two concerns, once again, are 270 Beach Street, the O'Hara residence down there, and also Mr. Cody at 373 Beach Street. As you know, areas where we've requested the buses be relocated, there is no parking there to begin with. So, it would not be that difficult for a bus to just pull over and park in there and have the required 60 or 90 feet or, or whatever is required. So I hope, I really hope that you'll look into that thoroughly and see if we can come to some adjustment for the residents down there. They're longtime residents of this city, and they have to be given some serious consideration. The other thing that I'd like to clarify, I believe Heather mentioned this earlier tonight, is that, is that the, the bus that comes up Revere Street, that goes by the Cove, across North Shore Road and up towards St. Anthony's Church, that bus is going to be continued again? Is that the, is that the 111 bus we're talking about?
Oh, we're talking about the 411.
411, I'm sorry, 411.
411 makes the southernmost loop, or makes the loop on the south side, going to Underland. And we are planning on making sure that we address it so that the bus makes the loop in both directions, so the MGH clinic is...
So if you live in, if you live on Bay Road or across from the Cove and that area down there, the bus will be stopping there at some point?
That is correct, yes.
Well, that's certainly good news, and I thank you for that. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Just, we've got three more items, okay? First of all, I just got a text, want to make sure that that handicap space at 510 is moved, and when we're going to get it done? How soon can we get it done? This lady has a handicap, and she has to walk 50 feet from her house and can barely done it, do it.
We could probably move the back sign now. We should be able to do that within a week. We should be able to get that back sign moved. I think the stop, moving, moving the stop forward so that the stop is accessible, it's going to take a little bit longer, but I think to address the immediate concern there, I think we can do that.
I don't care about the front side, I care about the back side. Because, you know, that's one of my constituents, and, you know, I've been dealing with her for the last two weeks on it, so I just want to make sure it gets done sooner, if not sooner. Okay, that's number one. Number two, I want to call in Council Granasso again, item number 17, about 131 Malden Street.
Thank you, Mr. President. The residents at 131 Malden Street are complaining that the children, the people waiting for the bus, are sitting on their fence. They have a nice white fence, and now they're, they're sitting on it, and the fence is getting destroyed, but the kids sit on the fence and they're kicking their feet, and they're wondering if you could just move that somewhat in any direction away from this property. It's 131 Malden.
Okay, we'll take a look at it. I'll let you know with that side.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
And if I may, just a reminder on 5, 6, 5...
Walnuts and a hat.
Walnut, walnuts and a hats. And when, you know, I know we've been working on that for a long time, so I would hope that we get that done ASAP.
The plan could be moving that back sign at 510, and we'd also get that all done at the same time.
Okay, so we're talking within a week? Cool. Sir, you have some, we have someone in the audience that has a bus stop complaint. Name and address for the record, sir, just speak right into the mic.
Okay, my name is Frank, I live 176 Broadway.
Frank.
Presto.
Frank Preston, okay, sir.
I live 176 Broadway, and I have an issue with the bus stop that's been placed in front of my house. From what I understand, based on the information I was able to find from the MBTA website, in theory, what the MBTA ended up doing is trying to place bus stops evenly about 1,200 feet apart along the routes. And what they did is they measured the distance between all the bus stops, and then eliminated some bus stops, moved some bus stops, and created some new bus stops. In doing so, they removed three bus stops, which are probably from where I live, 176 Broadway, to Chelsea. So that means that the last bus stop in Revere is the new bus stop that's at 176 Broadway. So between Revere and Chelsea, that's the last bus stop before the one at City Hall. Okay? So that's just a little bit of information for all of you to understand why they moved the bus stops. They want them to be about 1,200 feet apart, so that the buses wouldn't stop as often, et cetera. Another issue that I want, a reason why I want to bring it up, is because they're already painting the streets. So that means last night, at 5:00 in the morning, I saw them painting the bus stop across the street from my house at 176 Broadway. So although we have, we're talking about this issue now, they're already implementing, you know, the painting on the streets. So once the streets are painted, it's going to be even more difficult for the bus stops to be relocated, because there've already been time and effort has been done to paint the streets. Also, a lot of the bus stops that they moved are in front of parking meters, so there are people parking there all the time, and so it's kind of a confusing situation. But after speaking with the people who own my apartment building, 176 Broadway, they're able to provide in writing something that says that they were not consulted or not, didn't even know about the bus stop that was originally going to be put there. Something else I'd like to say is that it might have made sense to put advertisements or notifications on the bus stops, like the shelters that they have, notifying residents that the bus stops might be changed, or to notify residents that there might be meetings in the future. And that way, people would be aware of it, instead of, I mean, look how many people are here now. There's probably less than 12 people here, and I don't know how many of them are citizens of Revere, residents of Revere. People don't come to the city council meeting, so they weren't aware of it. So again, my issue is just the bus stop at 176 Broadway, I live in the front of the building, the bus is stopping there every five minutes, and literally, the bus stop is, as far as this podium is to Mr. Patch, the bus stop is literally six feet away from the door. And my issue is that in the wintertime, people are going to be waiting there inside my hallway. There's already a history of theft in the hallway, people come in, take stuff from the hallway, packages, et cetera. I can just imagine what's going to be happening in the winter. I already have people smoking cigarettes, talking loud, you know, Dunkin' Donuts is across the street, throwing their Dunkin' Donut wrappers and cups. Who has to clean that up? There's not really a strong maintenance, you know, staff at my building, so just wanted to bring that up. And I thought that perhaps the bus stop could be moved somewhere else that would be more adequate. Perhaps where it was before, I think it was at Page Street, where there's like a little bar down the street, that would be a bit more adequate location, or even in front of the Dunkin' Donut.
I'm sure, thank you, I'm sure they will take all that into consideration. But I know 176 has been my main concern over the last week.
Right. It's not just me, I can, I can also get signatures from other residents if it's required.
Yeah. I, I, you know, I can understand that. I don't think it's necessary, because I think we have it kind of under control right now until they can come up with some kind of solutions.
My only issue is that if they paint the street, then it's going to be more, and they're going to be doing it tonight, I'm assuming.
Well, the city is, the city is painting the street from the old bus stops, like next to the old Riordan's.
Right.
That was done last week.
No, they was done last night. I met with Officer Riordan, so I'm assuming it's, it's Council Riordan's brother.
It was probably Captain Riordan at the time.
Maybe, yeah, Captain Riordan, that's right. He, he informed me about the information, said that he had talked to Frank S., I can't remember his last name, and he even said, Frank S. even said that the bus, I can't remember his last name, he works up on the third floor, he even said that the bus stop that was policed at 176 Broadway wasn't even supposed to be there, it was supposed to be placed somewhere else, and they had already agreed upon it. And then, I guess, the contractors that put the spot there had not, had a copy of the old plan or something like that, but I don't know.
We, we do have an, an issue with the contractors, I'm being confused on some of the issues, we understand that. So, we will take that into consideration, it'll be one of their targets.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, you heard our woes, ladies and gentlemen, so thank you for your cooperation, thank you for bearing with us tonight, and I know between Eric and Heather and Greg and our two new friends over there. So thank you, thank you for your time, and we look forward to, you know, correction of a lot of these things as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time. Next item, back to regular order of business.
Calendar item number four, communication from the city planner requesting a public hearing relative to an ordinance regulating medical marijuana and substance abuse treatment centers.
Council Riordan, you want to address this?
Well, we need to do it. First of all, the old attempt at changing the zoning was for a completely separate district than, than the new one is, and it seems to me that it would be prudent to do it right and put it in the proper perspective as far as a public hearing is concerned, because we're completely changing where we intend to put this, and I can foresee a time where if we don't do it right, we're going to have problems. So, it's simply a matter of starting over again, very simple.
Ordered to a public hearing.
Thank you.
Calendar item number five, communication from Suffolk Downs requesting that the host community election pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 23K, Section 15, Subsection 13, be held on November 5th, 2013.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the request is to establish a date of November 5th for the referendum vote on expanded gaming, and that's the same day as our regular city Ordered to November 5th, all in favor? Roll call.
Shall the city council call for the host community election pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 23K, Section 15, Subsection 13, to be held on November 5th, 2013? Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Riordan is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes? And Council President Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes? The host community election will take place on November 5, 2013. Calendar item number six, communication from Cheryl Wittridge regarding noise pollution.
Place on file.
Calendar item, oh, that looks like there was two stuck together. Calendar item number six, communication from Cheryl Wittridge regarding public council meetings.
Place on file.
Calendar item number seven, communication from, this is a correction, this is from Joseph A. Festa Jr. seeking to donate a certain parcel of land on Whedon Street, parcel ID 019327002, to the city of Revere for conservation purposes.
Okay, and we do have communication from the Conservation Commission recommending that these be accepted for city conservation property. All in favor?
That the city council accept the donation of land on Whedon Street from Joseph A. Festa Jr. for conservation purposes. Counselor Arigo?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Zambudo is absent, and Council President Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes? The land donation has been accepted for Whedon Street. Calendar item number nine, communication, oh, I'm sorry, calendar item number eight, communication from Joseph A. Festa seeking to donate a certain parcel of land on Elmwood Street slash Dyke Marsh. This is parcel number 019327012, to the city of Revere for conservation purposes. Shall the Revere City Council accept a donation of land from Joseph A. Festa on Elmwood Street, parcel 019327012, for conservation purposes? Counselor Arigo?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Riordan is ab...
He says yes.
Yes? Counselor Zambudo is absent, and Council President Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes? The donation of land has been accepted. Calendar item number nine, communication from the Conservation Commission, accepting and approving of Joseph A. Festa Jr.'s and Joseph A. Festa's conservation land donation for Whedon Street and Elmwood Street. Calendar item number 11, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Petrello and Son Corporation as a licensed drain layer.
Appointment's committee.
Onto motions. Calendar item number 12, motion presented by counselors Correggio, Guanasso, and Haas that the mayor provide a status report on the purchase of decibel meters for the police department. Specific monies were appropriated in the FY14 budget for this purpose, but the council is unaware of any action taken by the department to purchase decibel meters as of yet.
Counselor Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of residents have brought this to my attention. This is why the motion came about. We appropriated money for these decibel meters some six months ago, quite a while ago, and we want to know where we're at, a status report, because there's been a lot of problems with noise, capacitors near people's property, loud music, and we want to get to the bottom of it and have something in place for the future that the police can use, a mechanism that they can evaluate noise to better, to accommodate residents and give them some peace in mind. So there is a resident in the audience that wants to speak on it, but my opinion is we want to get something in place as soon as possible where we can address the issue. Thank you.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Since I read this motion when I got the packet a little while ago, I did speak with Sergeant Gino, and it's under my understanding that if a department requests of the police department, Sergeant Gino has a noise meter and he can run reports. So say there's an inspectional issue, he can go to the property, run a report, and forward it to that department head. So in the case of several, like, complaints that involve residential properties that inspectional services need to look at, if the director of inspectional services contacts him, he can bring it to the property with no problem, run a report, and forward it. But in one case in particular that I believe we have a gentleman here to speak about tonight, I think the noise pollution is so bad that our noise ordinance covers it without that reading because there's vibrations and such that we should be able to cite it right away because of the language in the ordinance. So I did speak with him since this came about, so I did want to speak on that, and I know he'd be happy to address any issues with this if you contact that department. Thank you.
Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've been working on this for like three, four years now, and Joseph DiNunzio put forward to this city council last year, a tremendous noise ordinance was reflective of surrounding cities and towns, and one that was very doable within our community, and well-accepted and received by this city council. And then, when the budgetary part of our business came to be this May and June, we put in the budget some money set aside to the police department for decibel readers in a number of three. We got that appropriated. Now we're looking for a little bit of enforcement. All the necessary tools are in place, everything has been, conceivably has been done with the outside assistance of the residents in our area, and the cooperation of the mayor, and also the cooperation of this city council. We've done everything we can do. Now what we're asking, that the proper authorities do the necessary enforcement of this particular ordinance, is very simple. In speaking with Sergeant Gino on numerous occasions, and he knows fully of our discussions, he said, "It's so loud, it sounds like a jet plane at Logan Airport is taking off." So why aren't we enforcing the law? And that's what we're going to do. We now have the cooperation of Sergeant Gino. He's going to go in and enforce this particular ordinance and, you know, let the chips fall where they may and give some relief to this homeowner who's had to board up his windows in order to escape from the noise that has emanated from this particular vibration and sound from this air conditioner. It's a very simple thing, and that's all this gentleman's looking for, and he's been pleading, pleading with this for years. I feel sympathetic, and every time I hear his voice on my voicemail, and I'm saying, "Not again, he's not, he's not getting any relief." I mean, it's maddening to the extent that, I think justice has to be served here, and I think enforcement of the ordinance has to take place, and now we must do it. Simple as that. And, and when we enforce this ordinance, make sure it's in place for the next summer season so this individual doesn't have to live as a hostage in his own home. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors on it? My, my response is, you know, Joe worked very hard on this, and I can appreciate what he did, because I go through the same thing when I rewrite an ordinance. And I got his latest letter about not, no enforcement on it, and I had told him that inspectional services is responsible for it. Now, it's not that I want to throw anybody under a bus, but they were wiping their hands on it, and it shouldn't be. There's reports which he gave me tonight from Sergeant Gino. I have those in my hands, and the building inspector is the zoning police, bottom line. He gets assistance from the Revere Police with the noise meters. And the only problem I had with this scenario is we have pre-new ordinance and post-new ordinance. Now, he, the violation was on the older ordinance, and no, nothing was done about it. Now we have a new ordinance, but the noise was already in place. What I'd like to do, I have no problem, you know, voting for this and moving it on, but I do want to get an opinion from the city solicitor, because I don't want, Counselor, Counselor, look, give me a chance. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass the motion through, but I also want to forward it on to the city solicitor, because I don't want to get caught in a situation like we had with the video place, that we're passing an ordinance and they were in violation before the new ordinance or after the new ordinance. So I just want a clarification. I'm not stopping anything. I just want to move on and see if we can get inspectional services to do the thing.
Point of information, Mr. President.
What's your point of information?
We've been working on this for three years. We didn't jam this thing through. This ordinance didn't just come out of the air. We've been working on this for three years. We've been working with the problem for three years. Now's time for action to get it corrected.
I'm not stopping you, Counselor.
Well, you are, you're delaying.
No, I'm not.
I think you're delaying by asking, what, what opinion do we need? We have an ordinance.
I'm putting the motion through Counselor, but I'm also referring it to the city solicitor for an opinion.
For what?
To see whether or not, you know, there's a legal violation from before the old, when the old ordinance to the new ordinance.
All we want the person to do with the property is fix it.
Counselor, I don't, fine, fine. That's what you think, and he's going to fix it, okay? And I'm putting an amendment on it, that we also refer it to the city solicitor for an opinion on violation status.
Mr. President?
Counselor Penta?
Just a, a point. I mean, Sergeant Gino went out there, wrote a report. Why doesn't he have the authority to write a, to write a, write a fine? I mean, ship it off to another department. I mean, let's work together here. We should give those people the authority to be able to write a fine.
We have Counselor. But they're not doing it.
So why doesn't a fine, why didn't Sergeant Gino, he wrote a report and said he didn't want a fine?
The report was written in 2011. That's the last report I have.
By the way you read it, I thought you just read it. I apologize, then, but I'm just saying, but...
This is 2011 on the old ordinance.
I mean, I think we're defeating our purpose here. Enforcement goes a long way, and it seems like a lot of these ordinance we put, enforcement falls apart.
Right.
We don't have enough people in the city, I mean, police officer went down, this down. Give other departments to write, to write these fines out, instead of, you know, double donor. That's just my point. They'll put it in a committee.
Counselor, the new ordinance gives inspectional services and the police department the authority to write the citation, bottom line.
Maybe I misunderstood something there. Sergeant Gino went out there, sounded like an airplane. Why didn't he write a fine? That's all I'm saying.
I haven't seen the latest report, so I don't know. That's Counselor Gino.
Just a point of information, Sergeant Gino's in charge of the traffic department, so I feel like this is a little bit out of his jurisdiction. They have the noise meter in that department because ordinarily, it has to do with traffic violations. This is a special circumstance where this resident has a really unfortunate situation in his property, but it's not a common issue. So before we had funding for all the departments to get these meters, it just happened to be in his department, and since he's one that is educated on how to use the actual instrument, he's the one that has it. But I believe that inspectional, if he, he can run the report, that's not a problem at all, but it needs to be forwarded to inspectional services to write the actual fine, because since they don't have the meter yet, they can't run the report, but it's in their jurisdiction because it's a property issue, not a car or a traffic issue, if that makes sense.
That, that is correct. But the motion reads, they're asking the mayor for a status report on the decibel meters and why they haven't been purchased. That's what the motion is, bottom line. That's the bottom line. So I'm going to gavel this through if it's appropriate on item number 12, 13 to 18, as is, as written, as written, to find out why the decibel meters have not been purchased. Under motion, all in favor? All opposed? Vote and so ordered.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented...
I'm sorry, Joe, did you want to, if you want, be my guest, sir, I'm sorry. We have to keep it to the purchase of the machines, please.
Sure. Well, hello and good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to take a few minutes to speak. And before I speak, I'm going to put on my glasses so I can read what I've written. I am here tonight because, I am here tonight because I have sent a letter of communication to every member of the Revere City Council, making them aware of the events and policy impeding the implementation of the Revere noise ordinance. I last spoke to everyone about a year ago, when the Revere noise ordinance was being discussed. Let me be honest and blunt, compliance of the noise ordinance is being frustrated because there are no decibel meters to monitor sound. At its most basic level, this is about your life in your home. The money, which was $1,600, to purchase four decibel meters was approved and available in June, but June is gone, July is gone, August is gone, and now we are into September, and nothing has been done. I have spoken to Mayor Rizzo no less than 10 times about noise as a continuing nuisance, a quality of life issue, and a hazard to public safety. I have never had any unusual, special, or extraordinary agenda. The only matter of consequence has been to mitigate the noise through compliance and enforcement of the noise ordinance. Actions define credibility, and there is insufficient commitment to bring the problem of noise under control. The facts speak for themselves and are shocking to anyone of conscience. Who will respond with assistance to noise ordinance complaints? The mayor's office will not, the police department will not, and inspectional services cannot. The fact that we have one decibel meter, and Sergeant Giano is assigned to traffic, and that is his focus, and that's where he is directed to exercise his duties. It's not in noise enforcement, it's in traffic. So if he's in traffic and there's no one else available, what are we supposed to do? What is anyone supposed to do? Sergeant Giano came to my home in 2011, and he signed the report, and the air conditioning units emanating the sound were in violation then, and they are in violation now. At 12 feet from my windows, the decibel reading is 84 decibels. 84 decibels. The phrase "measuring from 25 feet" was meant in its intent to be applicable in a public setting, not a residential setting. That's what the old ordinance said. In my support of my position, I am submitting as evidence the noise measurement report from the summer of 2011 from the Revere Police Department, signed by Sergeant Giano. Now, the reason, the reason no one has come since 2011 is once again, enforcement efforts were not ongoing under Tom Ambrosino. His one attempt at mitigation was to put, was to ask the property owner to, to put up a $75, three-section, open-slat fence. Now, what good did that do? Absolutely none whatsoever. And any, and the next time, at all times, when I asked for a return to take a second reading, there was always evasion and equivocation. And one day, Tom Ambrosino showed up, and it was October, and I asked him, "What are you doing here?" He said he was there to check the, check the, check the condenses. I too welcome the inquiry we're making with this motion, asking the mayor to provide a status report on the purchase of the decibel meters. Without the decibel meters, we can't do anything. We can't enforce the law. If your mother or dad has a problem, well, they have a problem. There's no way to solve it. And if I go to inspectional services tomorrow, inspectional services is going to tell me, "Joe, what can we do? We don't have a decibel meter." And if I go to the police department, there's no one there when you called them on the telephone to direct an officer to respond to a complaint from a citizen, asking for someone to, to appear with a decibel meter to try and resolve the noise issue. Impossible. It's not happening at the police department. I called Chief Cafarelli three times and asked him what the status of the decibel meter situation was. He never returned my call. Never returned any of my calls. That's where we're at with, with, with the, the noise ordinance. What has to be done is that we have to have in our possession the decibel meters, two of them to go to the Police Department, two of them to go to Inspeccional Services. That way, when anyone has a problem, it can be taken care of and not passed around from agency to agency. That's just not right. Thank you, everyone, for taking a few minutes to listen to me. Your help in resolving the issue of continuing noise violations is greatly appreciated. Thank you, everyone, for your attention regarding this matter. Thank you, everyone, sincerely, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Counselor Giannino.
Thank you. Can we put on a communication to Inspeccional Services to have them inspect this property? Because under my understanding, that according to the ordinance, you can write a fine based on vibrations. You don't actually need the decibel reading. So if we could do that, but I also, like I said, I've contacted Sergeant Giannino, so he's willing to run the report and forward it to them without a problem.
Do you have a close connection with him, Counselor?
I've met him a few times. But what was the exact address for the record?
43 Emmanuel Street. And your assessment of vibration in conjunction with noise is absolutely correct. The only, what only is needed to write a citation for vibration is for the responding officer to be able to sense the vibration.
Absolutely. And also, since we've talked about this tonight, you know, in terms of sound, we just talked about residences that are affected by the bus routes. So this could also be something that could be affecting these new bus stops that have been put in front of houses in their windows, you know? If we're going to enforce a noise ordinance like that, we could also look into that avenue too, if homes are being disturbed because of these new routes.
Well, I think --
Thank you.
Okay. On the motion to have Inspeccional Services go down and check the vibration at Emmanuel Street address, all in favor? All opposed? Vote, and so ordered. Item 13.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Gianno that the mayor request Mass Highway to repair the Casasa overpass in preparation for the Columbus Day Parade. In its present condition, the Jersey barriers are unkempt, and the railings are in poor condition. Furthermore, the inside needs to be repainted. The painting covering the graffiti is the wrong color. This area is a gateway to the city and should be repaired immediately.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. This is an issue that was brought up to me by a resident, and I have to say, when I drove through it, I was appalled. You have big plastic pieces hanging under it. There are weeds coming out of these barriers that are literally hanging off. If a car hits one on top, the car is coming over. And it just, it really isn't safe, and it looks awful. And we're doing so much work on our bridges in this community. It's one that needs to be repaired. It's a very main overpass, and it's an issue of public safety. Thank you.
Just a comment, you know, and every time I drive by that on the Revere Beach Parkway, when is one of our councilor lodges going to say something about this abortion? You know, here's something that happened six or seven years ago, and Mass Highway has not made any move to correct this situation. It's embarrassing. Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Counselor Giannino was exactly right. I mean, but they just, you're right. They just did that bridge over a few years ago. I've been, with the neighborhood, the West Revere Neighborhood Committee, we've been meeting the last few months just trying to get Malden Street and Sardis Street Bridge fixed. But all you get response from the DCR is that we don't have a bridge painting crew anymore. We don't have, you know, I mean, it's crazy. I mean, you just can't get anything done. But I hope Counselor Giannino has better luck than I have had trying to get Malden Street and Sardis Street Bridge done because it's a disgrace. We're having that urban trail opening, and they're going to walk through that bird crap and the pieces of the bridge falling down, and nobody wants to do nothing. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry if I got off there subject a little.
No problem, Counselor. Counselor Giannino.
Can I make a friendly amendment to add the Malden Street overpass to that motion as well? Because as soon as I put this one in, my grandfather, another constituent of your ward, Counselor, was very upset that I neglected to include that bridge to the motion. So thank you for bringing that up.
Shame on you. Yeah, also, if you could, I thought Sardis Street in there also, please. Thank you.
Any other bridges we want to add? Only friendly amendments, all in favor? All opposed? Vote, and so ordered.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counselor Gianno that the mayor request planning and community development to include Trevally Road on the street and sidewalk improvement list. The road's present condition constitutes a public safety hazard.
Counselor Giannino.
Thank you. This sidewalk was another one brought to my attention, and when I went down there and took a ride, it's awful. The sidewalk is literally falling apart. Giant chunks of it are in the road, and people are tripping on them, and it's just, the motion speaks for itself. Thank you.
All in favor? All opposed? Vote, and so ordered.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor, in the interest of public safety, look into the feasibility of installing sidewalks on East Mountain Avenue and Carey Avenue. The priority should be on East Mountain Avenue up to Carey Ave and the lower end of Carey Ave.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. This also is in the area of Trevally Road. As a matter of fact, we're working down there now, the contractor, on doing Payson Street, part of John Mooney Road and the lower end of Butler Street. But this particular motion, I think, also takes some priority because kids going to the high school and some kids even walking over to the Romney Marsh Academy use that end of East Mountain Avenue and also the lower end of Carey Avenue, which at some times, and many times actually, can be a nightmare down there because kids, there is no sidewalk there of any consequence. Kids are walking out on the street. The traffic does become very heavy, and it's sometimes very fast on East Mountain Avenue. And people are going down Carey Avenue, and they're not supposed to at certain times. And it's creating a problem, a public safety problem for the kids. And God forbid, none of us would certainly want to see any child injured down there. So I'm requesting this motion, and I'm also requesting that priority be given to East Mountain Avenue, from School Street up to Carey Avenue and the lower end of Carey Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I support the motion 100%. Back in August 27, 2012, I put that motion in for East Mountain Avenue, both sides because of the high school and the school area down there. It's a serious safety issue. But it needs to be addressed. It needs a new sidewalk, that whole area there, and also the other side going towards Payson Street. Also, I'd like to add a friendly amendment to add police surveillance for excessive speeding since the high school opened.
Counselor, that should be a separate motion because we're dealing with sidewalks, and then we're dealing with --
Mr. President, point of information, point of information, Mr. President.
What's your point, Counselor?
We had the police down there for several days, down at the end of Carey Avenue, East Mountain Avenue, patrolling that area when school did open. So, thank you.
So noted. Counselor.
I just want to mention, I got some calls on it the other day, and I just wanted to bring it up, that way the residents know that we're aware of it. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Counselor Guello.
Thank you, Mr. President. While we're on East Mountain Avenue, a friendly amendment, I would like to add Mountain Avenue with that because based on the fact that the area residents have been calling regarding Mountain Avenue. And I think they just, while they're on East Mountain, they should just go right across it and go right up Mountain and correct the problems as they exist, if the maker of the motion is acceptable to that.
That's fine, but I still would like to put priority on the areas.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Giannino.
Just a point of information. I think Mountain Avenue is on the capital improvements list for this upcoming season. So that should already be being addressed. It was a three-phase issue, so I think that that's actually going to be coming up anyway. Thank you.
So noted. On the amendment, amendment, amendments to the motion, all in favor? All opposed? Vote, and so ordered.
Mr. President.
Where are we? Counselor Patch.
If I may speak, I just, I want to make a correction. I said DCR about the bridges. It was actually Mass Highway I had the conversation with. Thank you.
So noted, Counselor.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Counselor Guello that the mayor request the DPW to repair the sidewalk on Wade Street behind Friendly Gardens. The sidewalk in its present condition constitutes a public safety hazard for the elderly pedestrians in the area. This is the second request for these repairs to be made.
Counselor Guello.
Mr. President, previously, a work order was submitted, conversations were submitted, appraisals were submitted, assurances were submitted. Nothing's happened. The area residents, namely at Friendly Gardens, which are a household group of senior citizens, can't walk Wade Street to get to the grocery store in order to conduct their daily lives. They've asked me on, to this, to me on several occasions, and I've asked the proper authorities on several occasions to please do this particular program. And everybody's saying yes, but nothing's being done. So can we put a little bit of priority on Wade Street and get it repaired so that people at Friendly Gardens can walk safely to the store and the people on Wade Street can enjoy a new sidewalk? Thank you, Mr. President.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? Vote, and so ordered.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor make arrangements through the appropriate department to have the several lots at the corner of Beverly and Oak Island Streets cut back. In their present condition, they constitute a health hazard, mosquitoes, to the residents abutting the property on Argyle Street. It is my understanding that the property in question is currently in tax title.
Counselor Powers.
Mr. President, this has historically been an area down there where there have been overgrowing of weeds. It's approximately two or three house lots. My understanding now, it is in tax title. If it is in tax title, then I think the city should go ahead and bring someone in to clean that lot up. You know, we're right in the midst now. We hear every night about West Nile virus. Well, I mean, if this is not a breeding ground for mosquitoes, I don't know what is. So I think it's incumbent upon the city to clean that property up. If it's in, if it is or it isn't in tax title, clean the property because we may very well be receiving that property through tax title at some point. There's nothing can be built on it. We don't want anything built on it. It's a storage area for water. We just spent $800,000 or $900,000 a couple of years ago down in the Oak Island neighborhoods of Arcadia, Elliot, New York, and Argyle Streets to correct flooding. We certainly do not want to add any homes down there that would not only increase flooding but put more kids into the school system. So I would ask that the administration move ahead with this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I think this is a very important motion, and I can tell you that I just recently got an email from Salem State saying that they found West Nile in Salem, which is only several miles up, you know, the highway from Oak Island. So it's in our neighborhoods, and it's close. So it's something that everyone should be aware of. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? Vote, and so ordered.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request the Building Department and/or the Conservation Commission to issue a cease and desist order regarding fill being brought into the boatyard at the end of Mills Avenue.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all may or may not know, we had a meeting down at the Old Waff Restaurant a couple of months ago, where developers were told us that they wanted to put 42 or 46 units on that property. They were sent away with a, I think, a resounding feeling of no from the neighborhood down there. The neighborhood don't want that many units. Lo and behold, last week, I got a call from residents down there. They had dumped 20 loads of fill down there on that property. I went down with Andy DeSantis and also Officer Laria to stop them. Little behold, lo and behold, this weekend, they're down there spreading the load. I think they have clearly violated the wetlands protection laws, and I think that the administration, Conservation, Building Department has to take immediate action against them to stop this from going any further. Let's send them the message that we sent them that night down at the Waff. They do not want 42 or 46 units on that property. It's a zone RA, and that's the way it should stay. Thank you, Mr. President.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? Vote, and so ordered.
Late motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request DCR to look into the feasibility of increasing the brightness of lighting on the northern end of Revere Beach Boulevard. A number of residents have voiced concerns over the dimness of the lighting. Soon it will be darker earlier, 5:00 p.m., and many motorists going to the North Shore now use Revere Beach Boulevard as a major travel route. This is the second request.
Mr. President, I realize I'm limited to three motions, so the motion speaks for itself. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I do would like to make an amendment to that, knowing that the whole beach is dim, and a lot of our residents walk the beach even at night. I would like to amend that to include the area from, you're talking about Revere Street North?
Yep.
I'm talking to include the whole beach.
Entire beach from Elliot Circle to Carey Circle.
From Elliot Circle to Carey Circle.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's agreeable, certainly.
Okay. All in favor? Counselor Correggio.
Yes, I agree with both Counselors Powers and yourself. I received for quite a while people complaining about the lighting down there. It's very dim, and also, it's a safety hazard too. I mean, you need the sodium vapor lights. I think that's what you need, like they have on Broadway or something like that. But it needs to be brightened up, and it needs to be addressed immediately. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? Vote, and so ordered.
We have a late communication from the DPW superintendent and the city engineer relative to approving the Austin Street and Walnut Street abandonments.
We'll combine that with the public hearing being held next week. Being though further business, motion adjourned. So move. All in favor? All opposed? Vote, and so ordered. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time and expertise.